Good evening. The sixty-fourth meeting of the seventy-third term of Baltimore City Council is now called to order. For those folks who are joining us today in chambers, please ensure that your electronic devices are turned off or at a minimum placed on silence so we do not disrupt today's proceedings. Invocation will be delivered by Rabbi Small Selber. Is that right?
Perfect.
All right. At this time, at the Suburban Orthodox, at this time, it's my pleasure to welcome you to the council chambers. Obviously, this is a very trying time for our entire country, and we've asked the Rabbi to come out and to deliver today's invocation for not only the Baltimore City Council but for the entire city of Baltimore.
Almighty God, we pray that you grant your wisdom to the men and women in the leadership of our great city as they work to care for our citizens and to advance the causes of goodness, human decency, and equality for all. Oh Lord, in these difficult times when we have seen the darkest forms of evil perpetrated against the people of Israel, give the men, women, and children of the state of Israel the strength to remain steadfast in their commitment to bring light to the world. Almighty God, please give the innocent hostages, men, women, and children snatched from their homes and robbed of their freedom and dignity, the strength to weather the difficult days ahead. Oh Lord, please watch over the brave soldiers of the Israel Defense Forces as they are the tip of the spear for the community of civilized mankind in the fight against evil. Almighty God, bless the President of the United States and all of our elected officials for their courage to choose good over evil. In these difficult and challenging times for our city, our state, our nation, and the world, grant the men and women of this chamber the capacity to follow in your footsteps, oh Lord, to bring safety, security, happiness, joy, and contentment to our citizens who turn to them for help and assistance. Almighty God, give the special men and women of this chamber the courage to stand up for truth, the strength to stand up to evil, and the belief in themselves to always do what is right. May your blessings be showered upon them, and may all their efforts meet with success. And let us say amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Selber. At this time, please state the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our showcase this evening, it is my pleasure and honor to welcome Dr. Steve Zen, Chair of the Department of Pediatrics at the University of Maryland Children's Hospital. At this time, the floor is yours, Mr. Doctor.
Thank you so much. I want to thank Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer for inviting me here today. I know all of you know that there's a hospital a mile and a half away from here, the University of Maryland Medical Center, and I know you're all familiar with shock trauma, but I want to refamiliarize you with the fact that there is a full-service children's hospital in that building. There's a hundred-and-twenty-seven-bed children's hospital on Green Street, full service, with its own emergency room that is staffed by pediatricians that have extra training in emergency care. We have an incredible neonatal intensive care unit. We have an incredible primary care group working out of the Midtown office, and this is our seventy-fifth anniversary. So I'm really pleased to be here to celebrate our seventy-fifth anniversary with you. I've given you a two-page summary of the children's hospital with my business card and phone number. If there's anything that the University of Maryland Children's Hospital can do to help your constituents, to help children in the city of Baltimore, we are here to serve. We have capacity, and we want to do our part to help this incredible city. For those of you who are listening, there is a link that you can get onto, which is So if you'd like more information and you're listening in, that's the link to use, umchildren.org. I want to introduce to you Jasmine Pope, who is our Director of Community Services. Jasmine, if you come up, and she's just going to spend a minute telling you about some of the incredible programming that we're doing.
Hi, everyone. How are you? This is interesting. I'm really happy to be here today to talk about the work that we're doing at the children's hospital. One of the unique things since I've been working there that is close to my heart is the fact that we are developing a model that brings care outside of the hospital, right? We live in a city that has so many well-funded and older institutions, and we don't take into account that the folks who need help the most, who are the most marginalized in our cities, have experienced the most trauma within some of those institutions, right? And so we need to look at the way that we are presenting and bringing health care to folks outside of those walls. What does that look like? And so at the children's hospital, we are currently utilizing a model that takes health care and makes it mobile. So we're working with an organization in Cherry Hill, I'm sure some of you all have heard of it, the RICH Program. I visited there with Councilman Cohen and Dr. Zen, and we talked about what it would look like to bring the services that people wanted to the community, and also use that as a way to show folks what's available in the hospital so that people can have care that is not only responsive to what their needs are, but also affirming to who they are. And we can only do that by asking the questions and then by tailoring our services to do that. So I think this holistic approach that we're taking, that I'm able to develop with Dr. Zen, with the assistance of our board, to make sure that we are supported in being able to bring care to the community that exists outside of the walls of the hospital. So not only are we over on Lombard Street, but we're also in the community. So look for our mobile unit, look for us, Dr. Zen's out there sometimes, I'm out there all the time, because we really want to take what the children's hospital does and expand upon that. So I'm going to pass it over to the head of our board.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Stephen Wazinski. I'm Chairman of the Board of Visitors of the Pediatric Hospital. I walk through the neonatal intensive care unit, the regular intensive care unit, the pediatric ER department, and I see hope for the children we care for. We want to improve our partnership with our neighbors in the West Baltimore area, which is close to us, and for the rest of the citizens of Baltimore. We initiated a program to be run with the R. Adams Cali Shock Trauma Unit to help save lives by going into the schools and teaching kids about saving lives should they find themselves in a medical emergency, to help them become immediate responders, which is really the new term today as opposed to first responders. We'll discuss Narcan, Stop the Bleed, defibrillators, CPR. We've presented to you Stop the Bleed kits. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, but if you find that you would like to be trained in that, please contact us. We'll arrange to come into the city of Baltimore and your offices and train you in Stop the Bleed. I know many people who unfortunately have needed to use this but have survived because they were able to get immediate care. On behalf of the Children's Hospital Board and the Children's Hospital, thank you for allowing us to present this program to you. Thanks a lot. Also, thanks to Councilman Schleifer for introducing us to you.
Thank you. And before we move on, I would like to provide an opportunity for Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had the privilege of touring the University of Maryland Children's Hospital, and as a councilperson from the west side of town, I was extremely surprised to see really such a state-of-the-art children's hospital. I know that our gut reaction has always been to go to our community hospital, a hospital that's, you know, closest to you, but as a father who's unfortunately had to take their, you know, my kids to the hospital for different things, when you go to a hospital that just might be closer, oftentimes you're there overnight for pretty routine things, whereas what I witnessed when I was at University of Maryland Children's Hospital is that there was zero wait time in the ER. Sounds crazy, right? Zero wait time in the ER, and the professionals who were there, I mean, I just walked through the ER, and there was doctors of all different specialties there as opposed to, you know, waiting many hours to see a doctor. They're all walking through the halls, they're all working in the ER, which is pretty surprising, is not something I've been used to. And so I would encourage anybody in the city, if God forbid you ever do need any medical attention, it will be quicker in total time to drive a few extra minutes to a children's hospital, like University of Maryland Children's Hospital, rather than waiting in the ER or another ER for many hours. And that's just something that really is priceless, and this is the west side's children's hospital, and so if you're on the west side of Baltimore, it is very quick to get there. When I GPS'd it from my house, it took me straight down Park Heights, and I was there relatively quickly, as quick as it would take me to get here. And so I want to thank the leadership there for everything you guys did to create such a great space, and hopefully we can all be part of informing people of this wonderful asset that we have in the city. And, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I would also like to come up and present a proclamation on behalf of the entire city council from your office, and I'll read it. Be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to the University of Maryland Children's Hospital in recognition of your seventy-fifth anniversary of dedication and excellent work provided to the children of Baltimore. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on the sixteenth day of October, 2023, President Nick J. Mosby and all members.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, not here, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, also absent, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, also absent, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Now we will proceed with adoption of the journals. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the journal for the October 2nd, 2023 meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found at the beginning of page two of our agenda for tonight. We'll now turn to bills being introduced by the clerk. Madam Clerk, please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0438, Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs Establishment for the Purpose of Establishing the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, Defining Certain Terms, Providing for the Establishment of the Office, Articulating the Purpose of the Office, Establishing the Powers and Duties of the Office, Providing for the Administration, Staffing, and Budget of the Office, and Requiring the Office to Submit a Certain Annual Report. Sponsors Ramos on behalf of the administration.
The council would like to recognize sponsor of the bill. Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. This bill is in cooperation with the Mayor's Office. The Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs already exists. This is an office that was created during the Rawlings Blake administration, designed to help welcome those who are new to our city, particularly those who are new to our country, and make them feel welcome. They have done a great job, particularly during COVID and a lot of other crises that we've been facing, with helping with resources, with translation, and we want to continue to keep that going by codifying the office into our laws. And it really does send a message that we are a welcoming city and that we welcome everyone here, no matter where you're from. And so thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you for your sponsorship of this bill. It will be assigned to PSGO. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0439, Zoning Variants Side Yard 6709 Western Run Drive for the Purpose of Granting a Variance from Certain Side Yard Regulations in the R1E Zoning District for the Expansion of a Residential Dwelling on the Property Known as 6709 Western Run Drive, Block 4250, Lot 016, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque. Sponsors Schleifer.
The body would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill that I have to introduce could have been avoided in general. The BMZA used to hear minor variances and issue approvals, especially when neighbors support the proposal and the proposal meets the requirements, which this property very much does. It's a unique-shaped property, as well as the reasons they need it are definitely deserving. They need to be able to have the opportunity to open up their home to elderly family members, and unfortunately, the BMZA has denied their variance. And so being that the BMZA does not want to take that responsibility that they have seriously, we are left with no other choice but to issue a long, timely, costly process of actually changing legislation, having city council hearings, hearing this at multiple council meetings, to essentially do the work that has been done by the BMZA for many decades, but unfortunately stopped at the beginning of this year. So I thank everybody in advance for their support of this variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill's been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 23-0440, Sale of Property Market Center Renewal Plan Area Thirty-Two Properties for the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Sell at Either Public or Private Sale, All Its Interests in Certain Properties That Are Located Within That Area Formerly Known as the Market Center Renewal Plan Area, Originally Established by Ordinance 77-579, As Last Amended by Ordinance 18-214, And Are No Longer Needed for Public Use, And Providing for Special Effective Date. Sponsor Costello.
This bill's been assigned ways and means. Madam Clerk, Chairman Costello, we'd like to speak on behalf of the bill. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was introduced as a result of the Market Center URP expiration. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0441, RPP Area Thirty, South Baltimore East, Exception, 1600 South Charles Street, For the Purpose of Amending the Parking Management Plan Restatement for RPP Area Thirty, South Baltimore East, To Add an Exception to the Plane's General Permit Allotments for Dwelling Units. Sponsor Costello.
Body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill. Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill is being introduced at the request of the South Baltimore Neighborhood Association as part of a negotiated agreement between the community association and the developer for the property at 1600 South Charles Street in return for the community's support for the rezoning of that property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill's been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0442, Resoning 2220 Rice's Town Road for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Property Known as 2220 Rice's Town Road, Block 3227, Lot 050, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, From the C2 Zoning District to the C1 Zoning District. Sponsor Torrance.
This bill's been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0443, Resoning 3500 West Forest Park Avenue for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Property Known as 3500 West Forest Park Avenue, Block 2911, Lot 023, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, From the C1 Zoning District to the R1 Zoning District. Sponsor Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to ECD as well. Before we go into resolutions to be introduced tonight, we're in front of greatness. I wanted to announce the man, the myth, the legend, Travis Winkie is in the chambers today. If you could please stand, Mr. Travis Winkie. Internationally-known icon right here from West Baltimore. Many people don't know this, but he was an amazing dancer back in the day. I had to do my homework and research to know that, but many folks know him from the fashion world, so thank you for joining us tonight. Madam Clerk, if you could go into the resolutions. She's green.
City Council Resolution 23-0195R, Informational Hearing Addressing Youth Violence in Baltimore City for the Purpose of Inviting Representatives from the Baltimore City Police Commissioner, the State's Attorney for Baltimore City, the Chief Academic Officer of the Baltimore City Public School System, the Deputy Commissioner of Youth Wellness and Community Health from the Baltimore City Health Department, the Chief of Police for the Baltimore City School Police, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, the Director of the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation, and Interested Members of the Baltimore City Youth Commission to Come Before the City Council to Discuss the Increase in Youth Violence Across the City and the Risk Factors That Are Driving These Incidents. Sponsor Stokes.
Obviously, it's critical for us to get ahead of this epidemic that we see not only here in the city of Baltimore, but we see throughout the country as it relates to youth violence. This is a bill, a resolution, that the Chairman Stokes had in a few months back. He wanted to put it back in for us in the administration, continue to kind of talk about it. With that, this resolution is assigned to Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. Moving on, you can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved, and probably second, I was in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The consent calendar has been adopted. Now, before we move on to second reader, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill and second reader from ECD.
City Council Bill 23-0356, Zoning Modifications to Research and Development Facility Use.
The body would like to recognize Vice President Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 23-0343. This bill was heard on October 10th, 2023. It was voted favorable as amended. The findings of fact are on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of fact.
It's been seconded. All those in...
Pardon? So...
Excuse me. No.
Okay.
You got it?
Yes.
All right. Talk to me. Thanks for cleaning it up.
So I jumped a bill.
I know.
What I did.
And he caught it.
So, so backing up. 23-0356, zoning modifications to research and development facility use. This resolution was heard on October 10th, 2023. There are amendments on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably second. I was in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Vice President?
And just for a quick explanation of those amendments, they are largely technical but also include a minimum parcel size of one acre for wet labs in the C2 zoning district.
All right. So you're going to move...
I move the resolution as favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably second. I was in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, please call in the bill first.
City Council Bill 23-0396, City Streets Closing, A Twenty-Foot Alley and Two Ten-Foot Alleys.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
23-0396, City Streets Closing, A Two-Foot Alley and Two Ten-Foot Alleys. This resolution was heard on October 10th as well, 2023. I move the resolution as favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably second. I was in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it.
City Council Bill 23-0361, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variances 1613 Edmiston Avenue.
Madam Vice President?
23-0361, Zoning Modifications to Research and Development Facility Use. This resolution was also heard on October 10th, 2023. The finding of facts are on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of fact.
It's been moved and probably second. I was in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The finding of facts are adopted. Madam VP?
And I move the resolution as favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. I was in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 23-0343, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variances 633 South Monford Avenue.
At this time, the council would like to recognize Madam Vice President.
23-0343, this bill was also heard on October 10th, 2023. It was voted favorable as amended. The findings of facts are on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of fact.
It's been moved and probably second. I was in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam VP?
I move the bill as favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably second. I was in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill's moved forward for third reading. No, that was as amended, right? Did you just amend it?
Favorable as amended, yes.
Okay, yeah. So it moves forward. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 23-0375, City Property Renaming Reach Partnership School Field to Senator Robert L. Dalton Stadium.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee held a hearing on this bill. The committee voted to approve the bill with amendments as reflected in the materials for tonight's meeting. I move the amendments favorably.
It's been moved and probably second. I was in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Before we move on, Councilwoman Ramos, would you like to speak on behalf of this bill? Mr. Chair?
If appropriate, sir. This is an important bill to rename the Reach Partnership Field to Senator Robert L. Dalton Stadium at Lake Clifton. The amendment is to add "at" at Lake Clifton at the end. Senator Dalton was the first black senator in General Assembly from East Baltimore, so we're very proud to have the opportunity to honor him in this way, and thanks to Senator McCray for his initiative to be able to get us additional funding with the condition that we rename it after Senator Dalton. Senator Dalton was my constituent until he passed recently, so this is a fitting tribute so that young people can walk into the stadium and learn who this great man was, and we're excited to do this. Thanks very much.
And before we move on to vote this out, the smartest man in City Hall, Richard, came up to me and told me, I always embarrass Richard because he is the smartest man in City Hall, and said he was actually the second. He said the first was in nineteen what?
Fifty.
Fifty, he was a Republican, Senator Cole. And, you know, so I told you that earlier, but I want to make sure I told you the right thing in front of the public, so that was my mistake, but he was actually the second, not the first. First Democrat. So with that, it's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 22-0137R, Informational Hearing Hiring Initiative, Spanish Speakers.
The body would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee held a hearing on October 12th, 2023, on this resolution. The committee voted to approve the resolution. I move to adopt the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. I was in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it. Resolution's been adopted. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 23-0372, Office of City Establishment and Administration.
Body would like to recognize Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations heard this bill initially on May 3rd, 2023, and held a voting session on October 11th. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk, and I move the amendments.
The amendments have been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The members are adopted. Mr. Chair?
I move the bill favorably as amended.
It's been moved and probably second. I was in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. We have one nay, two nays. Okay, so we're going to do roll call. Madam Clerk?
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey.
She wants to split. You want to explain your vote, right? Body would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. So I am voting no this evening because I believe that by establishing this office, this is duplicative in nature. because I believe that by establishing this office, this is duplicative in nature. But for me, after careful review of the hearings, also conversations with the bill's sponsor, I do not see how the establishment of this office will actually benefit my constituents in improving response time to the day-to-day items that you can see that they need resolved as well as, the response time as well as the quality of response. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman McCray. Always a woman of your word, always very thorough, and we appreciate that explanation.
Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Burnett. Bullock.
Yes. Floor would like to recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. I do appreciate the sponsor of the bill bringing this forward. As you know, I am also a co-sponsor of the legislation. I do appreciate the intent of it. At the same time, I do recognize some of the concerns that have been raised by the Office of Performance Innovation. The main concern I have primarily is around potential funding issues. So again, I'm not in opposition to this bill. So at this point, my votes could be to abstain. Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation. Madam Clerk.
Porter. Costello. Stoughton. Glover. Ramos.
You didn't call me.
President Mosby.
Aye. So what's that?
Three absent.
For the record, you abstained or no? Abstained. So I mean, yeses. So this bill passes with eight yes, three nos, one abstained, and three absent. Madam Clerk.
On City Council Bill 21-0159, Procurement Zero-Emission Vehicles.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's amendments on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably second, I'll favorably say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
It's been moved and probably second, I'll favorably say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Bill's on third reading. You can, we can turn now to these bills for final passage. The first one up is 23-0387. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0387, Minority and Women's Business Program Reauthorization. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Before we move into committee announcements and the regular announcements, I would like to recognize Mr. Michael Swift, if you could please stand for us this evening. Moving forward, Mr. Swift will be the official Baltimore City Council parliamentarian. So any questions or concerns related to committee business as well as here, Mr. Swift will be available for all council members to ask proactively in the middle of heated debates and arguments on third, on, on second reader. But a proven professional, tremendous amount of background, and we appreciate you coming back to Baltimore City Council, Mr. Swift. Next up, we'll go to committee announcements. Chairs, if you hear your committee call, please stand and go into it. ECD, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a long list here, so please be patient. The Economic and Community Development Committee will hear several bills on certain days, and some of these bills are added to hearings we already have. Bill number 23-0413 will be heard on Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, here in council chambers at 2:00 PM. And it's the Solid Waste Management Plan for Baltimore repeal and replace. We will also hear Bill number 23-0386 on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 2:20 PM here in council chambers. And it's the landmark list home of the trend list. Sponsor, member Costello. Bill number 23-0439 will be also heard on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 2:30 PM. And it's zoning variance, side yard, 6709 West Run Drive. Councilmember Schleifer. Bill number 23-0410 will be heard on Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, at 2:00 PM here in council chambers. Rezoning 6311 Eastern Avenue, Councilmember Cohen. Bill number 23-0409 will also be heard on Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, at 2:10 PM here in council chambers. Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 2127 McCullough Street, Councilmember Torrance. Bill number 23-0420 will also be heard on Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, at 2:20 PM here in council chambers. Residential Permit Parking Program Area, Brunt Street Area, Councilmember Torrance. Bill number 23-0407 will be heard on Tuesday, November 28th, 2:30 PM here in council chambers. Zoning, discontinuance or abandonment of non-conforming use reporting, Councilwoman Ramos. Bill number 22-0140R will also be heard on Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, at 2:40 PM here in council chambers. Informational Hearing on Permit Reforms, Councilmember Ramos. Now we're getting into December, Tuesday, December 5th, at 2:00 PM. Bill number 23-0408, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 1046 Brantley Avenue, Councilmember Bullock. Bill number 23-0425, Tuesday, December 5th, at 2:10 PM, here in council chambers, Improving Safety and Habitability in Supportive and Other Residential Housing, Councilmember Ramos. Also on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at 3:30 PM, Bill number 23-0357, Strengthening Renters' Safety Act, Councilmember Cohen. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam V P. Next up, Education Workforce, we do not have one. Health, Environment, oh, you do have one for? All right. Chairman Costello, you can do education as well as Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, November 2nd, at 5:00 PM in chambers. City Council Resolution 23-0164R, Informational Hearing, Board of School Commissioners, Reporting and Structure at the Request of Chairman Stokes. Mr. President, Ways and Means Committee does not have any announcements this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Health, Environment, and Technology. Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, Public Safety Government Operations. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will meet to hear Bill 23-187R, Informational Hearing on the Theft of Cars on Wednesday, November 8th, 2023, at 12:59 PM here in council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Rules Legislative Oversight. Next up, Ways and Means. We already talked about that. And last and certainly not least, Fin, Finance and Performance. Do want to announce a town hall on City Council Bill 23-0428. It'll be right here in city council chambers. We're gonna also do it virtually so folks can dial in. It's gonna take place on Wednesday, October the 18th, at 6:00 PM. Again, that's this Wednesday, October the 18th, at 6:00 PM. And then there's a committee of the whole meeting on City Council Bill 23-048 this Thursday, October the 19th, at 2:00 PM. That's this Thursday, the October the 19th, at 2:00 PM. Following that, at 5:00 PM, there will be a special meeting of the Baltimore City Council. This is all pertaining to the mayor's redistricting plan. Today, everyone should have received some of the updates based off of the community input that we've had. Hundreds of folks have reached out to our office and pretty sure reached out to your office to provide the questions and concerns and complaints and issues. We tried to address that as much as possible by staying inside of statutory requirements, continuity, as well as compactness, ensuring that we kept neighborhoods intact. So again, if you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to reach out to myself, my office, and please participate at the town hall as well as the meetings on Thursday. With that, we're gonna turn it over to community regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements?
Mr. President.
The body would like to recognize Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, just a moment of silence for the thousands of innocent Israelis who were killed in the attacks last Saturday. My cousins were called up as reservists, military over there, and also to the thousands of Gazans who have also lost their lives and a hope for peace for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any additional committee special announcements? Madam Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank you, the mayor, and our council members that we were, the Mary Pat Clark, the Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark attended Opportunity to Purchase Act was signed today. Many of you got to see Councilwoman Clark today. She very much enjoyed her visit, so thank you for that. And thanks for your support of that bill as well. And I just wanted to also comment on our language access hearing that we had last week. I thought it was, I'm very pleased with the progress that we're making in terms of language access and hiring Hispanics and Latinos. There's a lot more to do. So I appreciate Mr. Chair and the committee for their attention to this really important issue. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Councilman Cohen, thank you for uplifting the devastating events that took place and are taking place. And with that, we know that, you know, many members' hearts in this chambers are extremely heavy. Would like to lift up, he's not gonna say anything, Councilman Schleifer as well, who has a lot of family members in the area. He's continued to work around the clock. The council stands with you, Councilman Cohen, with your family members that are impacted, as well as you, Councilman Schleifer. I want you to know and understand that if there's anything that I can do or anything that this council can do to be supportive of your important roles, not only the city of Baltimore, but to your loved ones, you know, please do not hesitate to reach out and let us know. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Madam V P to close us out.
The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, October 30th, 2023, at 5:00 PM. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the now 218 victims of homicide this year and also the thousands of victims of war that we are having in Israel and along the Geyser Strip and West Bank. And may we call for peace and healing in those areas.
There being no new business before the desk, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be on Monday, October the 30th, 2023, at 5:00 PM. At this time, I would like to again recognize victims of homicide here in the city of Baltimore and folks that have been a victim to terror in the war throughout the world. Baltimore, we love you.